Called a meeting to order, welcome everyone. Land acknowledgement.
Uh, we respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on the Treaty 20 Michisagi territory and in traditional territory of the Michisagi and Chippewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as the stewards of of its lands and waters since time immemorial.
Thank you. Uh, any disclosure of county interests? Seeing none here. Uh, the agenda.
Uh, that the June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, Halliburton County Council agenda be approved.
Does it move? Counselor Carter, Counselor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, presentations today, we have Halliburton County Public Library Annual Report. Welcome.
Thank you, Warden, and thank you, members of council for having us. This is our annual visit to you to talk about our our annual report for twenty twenty four, all the things that we've accomplished. Uh, and they are significant. I'm not going to uh speak very much to introduce this. I'll turn it over to Andrea in a sec, but I just wanted to say thank you to the county for the funding that we get on an annual basis. It it makes a very big difference to this community that we can keep our libraries going strong. Um, I always say when when I speak about the library, it's we're not about books anymore. We always we always will be, but we're about a whole bunch whole bunch of other things that we do that kind of go under the radar. But those things are, those are the things that the community needs and looks for us to help. So um, we I think, I think for for a small library, we do a great deal of work in the community. And I think when Andrea goes over her report, you'll see that the numbers are pretty significant of what we can accomplish. So thank you very much for your your help financially, and thank you for having us here. And I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Great. Thank you very much, David. Uh, and once again, thank you, Warden Burton and uh county uh council members for inviting us to speak with you today. Um, Travis, do you have our annual report that you could pull up on the screen, please? Perfect. Um, so up there, we have our annual report. Some uh councillors who were at the uh May board meeting of the library have um seen this report already. Um, the the first section highlights some of our uh amazing achievements in twenty twenty four. Um, so uh we had our first ever Touch a Truck event, which was very well attended. We had fire trucks and OPP cruisers and uh Corvette from Curry Motors and uh Total Site Services brought um a rock slinger truck. Very fun for the kids. We uh welcomed many, many school visits, um including regular visits at Wilberforce and Cardiff Elementary of classes coming in. Uh, kids from here in Minden from Archie Stouffer. We have programming for uh homeschool families as well. So we saw lots and lots of kids coming into our uh branches for programming. We um also had quite a few behind the scenes achievements at the library that aren't uh always as visible to the public. So we um transitioned to a new interlibrary loans uh system with libraries across the province. We uh had a new book set um reservation system installed on our website. And um as uh this group knows, we went through a um uh review and implementation of a staffing model change last year um with reductions to some of our positions. Um, the very, very exciting uh news that we had from twenty twenty four is the opening of our Dorset branch. You can see um on the screen there a picture from the day of our official opening. So we uh had an empty room back in uh the summer when we had um Algonquin Highlands did a fine job with their Dorset Recreation opening. We had all the furniture installed and books brought up um and were able to launch uh in in late October. So that was, of course, one of our um most exciting achievements from from last year. Um, Travis, would you be able to flip to the second page? There we go. Um, at the top, you'll see some photos of our program. So we had um many, many programs last year, over five hundred and eighty-four. That represents more than twelve thousand people who attended our programs last year. So uh, of course, way too many programs to list, but there's just a few of them highlights uh up there. So a Diwali Festival, a teddy bear picnic, uh Mandela Art Coding Program for Kids, uh author visits, Cafe Espanol. Um, we aim to have something for everybody, for people of all ages and abilities and interests at the library. Um, and as uh David said at the outset, we, of course, we do loan lots of books, but we do many, many um other important things as well. Um, in terms of our online presence, so the the library's website and our resources are available twenty-four seven to our patrons. Um, like with many libraries, our digital digital presence is very strong and people are using our website and our um digital resources. So last year in twenty twenty four, we had a hundred and over a hundred and nineteen thousand website uh views, over twenty-nine thousand uh individual users of our website. Um, in terms of our uh digital circulation, over sixty-six thousand digital checkout. So that includes more than thirty-eight thousand eBooks, uh more than sixteen thousand e-audio books, and more than twelve thousand uh digital magazines. Um, as well, many patrons access our Canopy service, which is generously generously funded by the uh Halliburton Rotarians. Um, and that's a service where you can watch um TV, TV uh um and movies. Um, in terms of the highlights, some highlights from our uh physical collection borrowing. So it does appear a little bit tiny up there, but if you've looked on your screens, some of um our most checked out items include the Barbie DVD, uh Fire Weather Nonfiction Book by uh John Valant, uh novel by Kristen Hannah, The Women for Kids, Diary of a Wimpy Kid Big Shot, and of course, our Ontario Parks Passes and Radon Screening Devices uh remain popular. Um, physical physical circulation in twenty twenty four was um more than eighty thousand items, and then that's not including the more than sixty-six thousand uh online checkouts. Um, we uh circulated uh but our book club sets more than a hundred and fifty-five times, and there were more than uh seven thousand four hundred active library cardholders. So that's people actively borrowing from our collection with a library card. Um, and that does not include all the people that come in, high, you know, teenagers using the library after school as a hangout space, parking outside the branches, using our free Wi-Fi, coming in to use the washrooms, doing programs, using our meeting rooms, um staying cool or when it's hot out or uh warm when it's cold out during the ice storm, for example, people came in to use our Wi-Fi. Um, at the start, I mentioned our Touch a Truck uh event last year for Summer Reading Club. This Friday, I invite you all to attend at the Dice Art Branch. Uh, we are having our Summer Reading Club uh launch party with a special um uh presentation by Browning Reptiles. So be all sorts of creepy crawly things there. We'll have a karaoke machine um on prizes. Kids can sign up for Summer Reading Club. Uh, ten to twelve, I invite all of you, members of the public, to join us. Uh, it's going to be a really fun event. And thank you to our, the friends of the Halliburton County Public Library who generously uh raised funds throughout the year for the library, and this is sponsored by them. So thanks and kudos to all of their hard work throughout the year to raise money for the library. And in, that's a very quick summary of some of our highlights.
Take any questions?
Yeah.
Questions? Lisa.
Thank you for that. It's obvious that uh the libraries are very busy in in getting through to lots of people. I'm wondering if it's possible to have a breakdown of the physical um books that are taken out, not including digital stuff for each branch. Is that something we could see?
Yes, yes. Um, in fact, we do um have that report uh as part of the um library board. It's usually in the the consent agenda. I don't know. Did you want one pulled up right now?
Oh, no, it's okay. Just so that every, I mean, I have, I will look at that because I'm, but I'm just wondering, just so that everybody else could just to, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, we track that across all the branches all the time. So it's very easy to get there. We'll circulate that to all members of council.
Okay. Sure, yeah.
Other questions? Counselor Danielson.
Um, just a comment. Um, I I just want to thank uh yourself and, you know, and the board for all the efforts that went into, you know, reopening the branch in Dorset It's been very, very well received and uh, you know, just to, for it to go along with our grand opening of the of the rec center there, it's it's uh, you know, I'm just really pleased to see that in place again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Resolution?
Uh, that the June twenty five, twenty twenty five presentation at Halliburton County Public Library Annual Report be received.
Someone move, Counselor Anderson, second by Counselor Ryle. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Had to go to the right person, that's all.
Uh, the consent agenda.
Uh, that the items listed under the heading consent agenda for June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five be approved as presented.
Someone move, Counselor Danielson, second by Counselor Ferry. All in favor? It's carried. Uh, Office of the CAO, Chief Administration Officer, Canadian Safety and Wellbeing Committee Governance Revision.
Uh, thank you, Warden Burton. Uh, so um as council is aware, the Community Safety Wellbeing Plan uh Committee was established uh two or three years ago with respect to the initially the intent of administering the Community Safety Wellbeing Plan. Over time, uh the functionality of the committee has has evolved into meet the needs of the of the community with respect to community outreach, uh creating a linkage between the different agencies, um identifying the needs of the of the county in relationship to the services provided, but also with the tra- change in legislation regarding the the what was Police Services Boards into the Detachment Boards. There's a legislative link between those two boards, uh sorry, the board and the committee with respect to the implementation of both of documentation of both areas. And as the committees evolved, I think it's time, it was an opportunity to look at the evolution of the composition of the committee and how it was set up. Under the original structure, um it was a an amalgam of staff members and community members, elected officials. But as we're going forward and presenting things about with some structure to the committee, getting them to bring recommendations forward to council uh to actually look at from some programming issues that will bring recommendations forward uh to move forward the plan itself, but also other aspects of enhancing the community, the well-being of our community at large, that it was my uh recommendation to the committee that they look at restructuring themselves because currently the committee is actually chaired by a staff member, which is unusual, right? Because you have you have elected officials and community members on the board. And so you have a staff member in the unadmirable position of not only uh uh Ms. Tiffin actually supporting the committee, but also having to run the meeting as well. Uh, and so with that, I made a recommendation that we kind of deconstruct the committee a little bit, pull the staff members off as committee members. They're still there to fully support the committee, and they'll function in the same fashion, just won't be voting committee members. Um, and also, I think, believe this year, we will be getting a budget request from that committee. Uh, so they'll now be potentially spending money. So I think it's important that we create a new structure in that. And so the committee itself accepted those recommendations with the new structure shown in the report, and have recommended to council that committee member Andrew Hodson uh be appointed as the Chair of the Committee for the Balance of this Term of Council. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Gary. Uh, Counselor Carter.
A really comment is more than a question. Um, first of all, understanding that this is Andrew Hodson on 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 this board as opposed to Andrew Hodgson, who's on the Detachment Board uh as the as the co-chair. Uh, look, is this uh Community Safety and Wellbeing, you know, was first introduced by the government and then enacted uh here in Halliburton County. Uh, we've seen a tremendous, I don't want to say growth, but a more of an understanding of the link of community safety and well-being with all sorts of other programs that exist across the uh the county. Whether you're talking homelessness, where you're talking about the Police Detachment Board, we're talking about social services, whether you're talking about what we saw this morning. Um, you know, this community safety and well-being plays a huge role in uh in in everything that's happening in the community. And so I think it's a I I think is as it grows and as it's a, this is a a natural next step. And I think it's, you know, a good step to have, you know, good governance on this. I mean, we still almost every meeting have a debate on who should be on the committee, like, you know, you know, because there's you know, there's no need having seventy-four groups in like some people have tried to do. Uh, you know, we've tried to keep it tiered, but it's uh, it's something that is going to continue to evolve. And I think you know, at this point, doing this is the right way to go.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson.
Just a quick comment in in support of what um Counselor Carter has said. I think it's really important that we have a member of the public chair in the committee. I think it just creates greater trust for the community and 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 greater involvement. So I I'm I really welcome this recommendation.
Other questions or comments? Resolution?
Uh, the staff report CAO zero four twenty twenty five, Community Safety Wellbeing Committee Governance Report uh Revision being received, and that is recommended that the governance structure of the Community Safety Wellbeing Committee be revised as outlined in the staff report zero four twenty twenty four. And finally, that it be recommended to county that recommended that Andrew Hodson be appointed as Chair of the Community Safety Wellbeing Committee for the Balance of this Term of Council.
Someone move? Counselor Ryle, second by Counselor McEckney. All in favor? It's carried. Go ahead.
One other thing to thank Sue Tiffin for the work that she did to bring us uh so far. Um, although she's relinquishing relinquishing her role as Chair, she's going to still be a key member, and we will make sure that we work her just as hard as before.
Yep, for sure. Okay, item eight-two, motion to reconsider motion R. one oh two dash twenty twenty-five County Administration Building Renovations. Cao.
Uh, thank you, Warden Burton. This report is actually just for information. The the motion reconsider will actually be dealt with further in the agenda. I think it's item K or M, whichever it is. Um, this is just outlining and making sure that everybody's clear as to what the process is for dealing with motion reconsider. All right. And then with that, so that the resolution would read, or the motion would read, a staff report, CAO zero six twenty twenty five, motion to reconsider. Motion R. one oh two twenty twenty five County Administration Building Renovations, eleven Newcastle Street, Minnan, be received as information.
And if someone move? Counselor McEckney, second by Counselor Carter. All in favor? It's carried.
Excuse me, Gary and um Dave, like, like, um, could you explain to me that again, like, uh, that basically means that we're going to be discussing?
No, no, no. So so, sorry, the um, the pro is just outlining the process. So as the procedure by law reads is before the discussion happens, or any discussion can happen about the reconsidering of the initial original motion, which was 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 done back a couple of months ago, um, we have to hold the vote to reconsider. So and if that if that motion, which simply would be the motion to reconsider the previous motion, if it does not pass, then there is no discussion on the previous discussion, previous previous motion stands.
Thank you.
So.
County Halliburton Service Delivery Review.
Uh, thank you, Warden Burton. Uh, so this is, as as I, at the last council meeting, we uh council established the scope of work for the second round or the second phase of the Service Delivery Review. Um, and I promised in that report that I'd bring back an outline of the process going forward. Um, so that's what this report serves to do is setting process. There are some differences from the last two around, and I'll explain it as we go through. Travis, can we put this first slide up, please? So last time, and so one of the areas that did come up before with respect to the the way it was done before, where there was these large committees, review committees that recruit that were created, that went up to steering committee, that had members of council, then it went from that group up to council. Um, we're simplifying the process a little bit in the sense that uh council and local municipal councils still are the ultimate approval authority on things. However, the project itself will be, there'll be a project oversight committee or steering committee, whichever terminology you prefer, that will be made up myself and the local and the and the four local municipal CAOs. Um, and they will provide oversight to the review group review committees in the sense that with the direction from council, the scope of work from council um and timelines and ensuring that everyone understands how things are being reviewed and will be ultimately responsible for drafting the recommendations that go up into council, the councils for consideration going forward. Um, the review from that, there will also be review committees for each one of the four areas that were approved by council, being engineering, communications, human resources, and the consolidated official plan. Uh, those will be staffed by, those will be um conducted by staff members. There'll be one staff member from each one of the municipalities, including county, so five members uh going forward. That group would do the the review work of their their identified area and that those recommendations and comments would go up to the Oversight Committee and would form the basis of of the recommendations ultimately go to council for endorsement approval or based on those arrows. And they go both ways for a reason because we may bring something to council, council may want some modifications. They would then go back down to the Oversight Committee to make modifications, and if necessary, bring back information from the various review committees uh going forward. Uh, the other piece we've put in is we've actually put in some support uh for the Oversight Committee, which would be Mr. Oval um and and Pam uh that would just provide support, making sure that each one of the review groups uh are staying on track as well as helping the Oversight Committee with the drafting of the final recommendations going forward. Um, I think this this serves two purposes uh in the sense is that it focuses the final decision-making of the recommendations uh at the CAO level versus before, it was kind of like a a a complete staff group that was trying to make a recommendation on a on a piece going forward. But from a more organizational development standpoint, it allows us to broaden the concept of bringing staff members in to help us work on the on on the review itself um and give some exposure, some succession planning, whichever you want to call it, career development for various members across the the five municipalities going forward. Travis, can I next slide, please? And just again, just for clarification, roles and responsibilities, and this is important for going in, is that the county council itself, hopefully coming out of today, the the ratification of the program itself is as outlined. Um, again, ensuring that the works coming forward are within the compliance of the defined scope of the SDR as established at our last meeting. Uh, will receive the final SDR recommendations from from the Oversight Committee and then render decisions regarding uh the implementation of the SDR report itself. Uh, and then the same approval level with the local municipalities as well as we're going forward here, because once we leave today, excuse me, and with the endorsement of county council coming out of this, I will appear before each one of the local municipalities and have the same conversation around the program, take any questions that they that may have at the local councils as to their involvement, what the process looks like, one of the timelines going forward. So that will happen over the course of the next months when we leave here. Um, I think I've already spoken to Cao's lining myself up as we go through um over the next month to talk to the local local committees itself. Uh, the Oversight Committee uh is responsible for the development of the program, which we've seen today, as well as a change management plan. And this is important. This is the implementation plan. And this was one of the things that was missing from the last go around, is there was a lot of really good work that was done on the program, but there was no act, there was no actual implementation plan put in place as to how getting people ready for the change, getting, how do you report? Um, what are the roles and responsibilities? Once it's implemented, who's doing what? And and that goes back to the conversation we had at the last meeting around service agreements and making sure everyone understands where they fit into the program. Um, and uh also, the they'll receive reports from the review committees and make final recommendations up into councils with respect to the program, implementation of the program um and draft the final report that that goes to council and local and the local councils as well. Um, the service review committees, they do all the background research with respect to the four areas going forward. And a lot, the good part about this is there was a lot of the work that was done last time is still relevant. The report, the review was just done. It was like two, three years ago. So there's some some new information coming in, but a lot of the work that was done is is of value to us. And that allows us to truncate some of the timelines and hopefully getting the final report back to council uh later this fall. Um, and they would draft and present their recommendations up into the Oversight Committee for their areas as well. Um, and then the SDR Project Lead, which is Mr. Oval, and it just supports the review committees as well as the liaison between the review committees and the Oversight Committee. Um, and it helps the Oversight Committee in drafting the final recommendation we're going forward. Travis? And so the these these dates are relatively fluid uh based on the time it takes to to go back and forth. Uh, so today, it's obviously we're presenting the program today to county council. Uh, between tomorrow and the end of July, um I'll be presenting this, what you're seeing today to the local municipal councils. And we're looking at a project kickoff meeting, which is conducted by myself and the CAOs with the review committees, making sure everyone understands the scope of work, what the expectations are, timelines, things of that nature. That will be the week of August eleventh. And then from that forward, the review committees will start their work uh and with respect to looking and getting final reports into the Oversight Oversight Committee, hopefully around the first week of October. Uh, and then that will allow us to bring a final recommend, the the final recommendation report to county council uh in the in our November twelfth meeting. Um, those, these are the dates where the these these may become fluid uh with respect to the timing to get the work done on the review itself. Um, and even to the point where they may actually not come all at once. They may come uh when when completed. And I think this is important because we're looking at getting the um presentations done to the local councils by the end of November. Uh, because if the recommendations are um approved by county council and local councils, and there are budget implications, it's very important that we stay within the budget cycle for all of us going into twenty twenty-six, because if not, we we could be delaying ourselves another year. Uh, and from a timing standpoint, the county budget will be before county council approval in the second week of December. And I think Minnan and Dice Art will be dealing with their budget February, in early February. Um, at least receipt of the budget in February. But anyways, long story is just making sure everybody has the information in time for the final preparations of their budget. So uh with that, Warden, I'll turn it over to, any questions?
Thank you. Questions? All right.
Well, the only thing I can see is that some of the councils don't even meet in August. So I I don't know if that applies anymore or not, but uh the timeframes may be a little.
We, if I might, to the to your word and the Counselor Ferry, um, that was set up the way that that's why we're trying to get to the local councils in July. And so the the dates we have, we've already lined ourselves up with the the July meetings for each of the council. We don't need, there is not a need for council involvement in August. That will just be at the staff level doing their review and then getting into reporting back up into council into the fall.
Other questions? Counselor R?
Well, I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Um, in each of the committees, we have representatives from each of the municipal councils.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing, a little sad. Uh, typically that defaults to the CAO, but an example might be in the case of engineering and our official planning. They would be able to delegate that to someone that might have, one of their senior staff that might have more knowledge.
Yeah, it it through your word and word into the Counselor R, that would be the my preference. Got to think for it to function effectively, and this has been very effective for us during the strat plan processes that if the CAOs are in every meeting or in some of the meetings, there's deference given to them as part of that meeting. So you may be, you may be actually restricting the the conversation with respect to bringing things forward. So I think it's important that the CAOs, where possible, not be involved in the review committees other than on in the oversight role, seeking direction and setting guidelines at the start with respect to here's the here's the box within which we think we should be doing our review. And by doing that, it gives the staff members that are the the subject matter experts in that in that particular area, the freedom to have an open and free discussion around, and then the recommendation will then flow upwardly into the CAOs. Uh, from our role, um, it's our job to make sure that prior to their first meeting, we've clearly articulated what their role is and what the response, their responsibilities are and the parameters of the review. Um, I think it's a real, I I think it's a really good way to do things that I've experienced to it way in the past, and the product you get is 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 far better than if the CEOs try to involve themselves in it every step of the process.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Carter?
I'm not making a proposal. I just want to put forward something for discussion on the um the Project Oversight Committee. If I was looking at this from a, certainly from a Minden uh perspective, the Project Oversight Committee would have councillors on it. Um, it, the councillors are there not to lead the committee, but to act as of, you know, a more of a link to council and to provide sort of the political view of uh some of these discussions. And I'm just wondering if that Project Oversight Committee should have a not a lot, but maybe, you know, one or two councillors on it to uh to make sure that, you know, the message that we have here is 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 carried, carried forward to that level.
Gary?
Um, I can see your enthusiasm already.
No, it's just, yes, thank you. Uh, my poker face is working well today. Um, I I think similar to my response to Counselor Ryle with respect to the CAOs on the review committees, there is an impact in that discussion, right? Because I view it as my responsibilities. I get my direction from this council, as your CEOs get their direction from your from your local councils, is that it's my responsibility to ensure that we're Is that it's my responsibility to ensure that we're staying within the bounds of what council has identified as the parameters for the project. And then by doing that, it then, the report, so that the information come up in the Oversight Committee and then ultimately the recommendations come into council will reflect that, those parameters being followed. Right? And so the check against, for us doing that is the draft reports going to council. Right? And if we go out of scope, they'll be identified at that point and then we'll correct going forward. I think from a, from an operational standpoint, having the review being connected in that fashion, I think there is a better, no disrespect to members of council. I think there's a better product coming out of it. I think it's the same pieces, the inference or deferences, just by the nature of our various roles is that one can't help but. And I think that in this structure, I think it's a, it's a process by which that we will end up with a solid project and the burden is on me. And then, and reporting back to council, that I'm following the direction given to council with respect to what the mandate of the groups are.
Yeah, I, I guess there's always, you know, the considerations of, okay, here are the guidelines that we're, you know, we're talking about. And this is what we've tasked you to do. But, you know, with everything that we do that is going to have, and I think all of the decisions that come out of this will have a major change in the county. There are, there are always political considerations. You know, we saw that last year in the budget in particular, and this was probably more the C K L. When we're talking about the, you know, housing and social services, child services. Staff went out and put together the best plan that they could for that situation of what was needed for each of those areas. But they didn't consider the political side of, hey, we can't afford to tax people that much. You know, we can't afford to add seven people into this area, even though, you know, there's an argument that could be made that they're needed. We just wouldn't be able to sell it at the, you know, at the tax level. So I, I just add that everything has got a political consideration also. So I, I'm just putting it forward. I'm not, you know, I'm not dying on the hill on this one, but it's, you know, I think that there's at least, it needs to be considered.
Warden, go ahead. Your point's well taken, counselor. However, my response, I think it's going to be similar to my last one, is that it is my responsibility to ensure that, because a big portion of my job is understanding the political side of it as well, and I do think I have a pretty strong level of political acumen. Is that that is a consideration as we're, as we're talking with the review committee, as we're talking amongst ourselves and putting the reports together, is that is part of it. And even insofar as we think here is the optimum solution that we could come up with, however, we understand that this is the price that comes with it. And then here, but here is another option, so that when council's getting their consideration, not only are they just getting recommendations, they're getting a detailed recommendation saying, here's what the optimal solution could be if there was no barriers. But here's what, based on restrictions, what we can afford, and if it can be phased, it can be whichever, all that would be so. And again, no disrespect to the last report that came out, it was pretty binary in the sense that here's your recommendation. It's now doing that proper evaluation in the role of the Oversight Committee and the role of my role as being C O and I would, and I would, without wanting to speak for my colleagues, the role of the local C O's is to put that level of understanding on the political side of things into whatever final recommendation goes forward to council.
Counselor Danielson?
It's interesting, I hear the point that you're making because there are political implications to almost everything we do and ultimately the decision is ours. And I've seen, or I believe that some of the problems that came out of the last review work that was being done in the working committees that were established by staff, that there was, I believe, some fear, you know, from staff as to what's going to happen to us, how does this impact us? And I would, what I would hope is that if there were any glitches that were being experienced during the course of the reviews, that that would come to us through you and that we would be able to, you know, give some guidance or be able to comment rather than us being involved, you know, in the working committees.
If you weren't to, to Deputy Warden, exactly. So that, again, that's how I view my role in this, is that if there is a problem, like anything, it could be anything. It could be timing, it could be, to your point, work not getting done, any list of things. It's my role to, to insert myself in the process, but also to inform council as it goes forward on an iterative basis over the thing. It's not simply a matter of, we're going to report to council on October 15th, we're going to report, no, it's going to be, there's when we're, council inflection points are with respect to decision-making. But from a status update standpoint of saying, or we're having an issue with this. Is it, do we think we want to get in this road? Do you think this is still within scope? Those are conversations that I would bring forward to this council as the process went forward.
Counselor Ralph?
Yeah, I think, I think I totally agree with what Mr. Dyke is saying because at the end of the day, and I trust him and I trust our C O's. And I think what we're going to get is we're going to get objective evidence that we're not going to have any partiality is going to be what it is. And I'm going to assume that there's going to be options also associated where options are recommended. That is to say, there's more than one way to skin a cat. So you may come to us with, here's how we can handle this particular issue, and there's options one, two, and three. Now it'll be up to council to determine which way to go and all that kind of stuff. Because what I'm afraid of, if we put counselors in there, we're focused on fiscal things. And what I don't want to see is, is a situation where I've already made up my mind, so don't confuse me with the facts. And that's where I don't want to be. I want to be able to hear what needs to be heard and then make a decision regardless of how long it takes to do that, but to come up with the right decision for our group in terms of the, of county, in terms of our staffs, all five of them, and the people that we represent. So I would prefer to have an independent, objective data coming to us, and then we can decide what we want to do at that time.
Murray?
So if, if, I hear what Bob's saying a little bit, I do quite a bit. The, if, if you're on a split situation where two of the C O's think they do want it and two of them don't, is that going to come back to this council?
Yeah, so in that situation, say there was not consensus amongst the C O's, I want to say, I don't want to say majority, but say consensus, then that would be reflected in the report that came forward.
Gives us a political opportunity.
That's correct. That's correct.
Other comments? Resolution?
The staff report, C O zero seven, twenty twenty five, Calbert, County Halliburton Service Delivery Review Phase Two Program Outline Be Approved. And further, the C O is directed to present the Phase Two Program Outline to the Halliburton County Local Municipal Councils.
Someone move, Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Public Works, Public Works Work Plan, June Update, so.
Good afternoon, Warden and members of council. This report is a work plan update for June. Our the Joint Roadside Brush Pickup Program with Minden Hills post two thousand and twenty five ice storm was successfully completed on June thirteenth. We estimate that we had about fifteen percent participation over all the residences along the roadways. So feeling it was a pretty good success. Our hot mix project is underway on six forty eight. We are now paving, by the end of today, we should have roughly three point two kilometers covered, which will give us just around a one point five left. And if the weather cooperates with us tomorrow, hopefully we'll get more done tomorrow, but they're calling for a little bit of rain in the afternoon, so we'll see. Surface, the county portion of the surface treatment contract as well is scheduled to start after the long weekend or after July, July second. The Potash Bridge Rehabilitation is underway. We started with the west portion of, of the bridge to start the rehab. We are presently rough, approximately at fifty percent completion for that half of the bridge. We're anticipating a deck pour tomorrow as well, so that will bring it up to about sixty percent or so, if that's successful tomorrow. Our road maintenance is well underway. With roadside sweeping, pickup sweeping and capital project preparations have been completed. And now we are moving forward with patching, ditching, culvert replacement and roadside brushing as well. So those are the ongoing projects right now that we have in maintenance. Our Fleet Division is now performing the paramedic vehicle service and annual inspections. And it seems to be going well. I think we've done four ambulances to date. And it seems to be going well. And that's in-house, in-house service. For twenty twenty five, we have scheduled roads for traffic counts. We count in spring, summer, and fall. This year's roads are County Road six, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty, thirty nine, forty eight, and one twenty one, with the spring counts completed. And finally, I'd like, Public Works Department would like to acknowledge and thanks, thank the ATV Association and Sonmobile Association for helping us with the clearing of the trail. They were a great help. They did a lot of the work along the rail line, so I'd like to thank them for that. And I'd like to answer any questions.
Questions? Unwritten. Murray?
See, excuse me, you tendered a salt shed there. And that closed on June the third. Do you have that? Have you awarded that yet?
We haven't awarded yet. We're in the process of awarding it right now. It's for the Eagle Lake Patrol Yard.
What's the size of that, you know?
It's thirty by forty in size, yeah. And the opening, the middle arch of the opening is approximately nineteen, nineteen feet.
I know you can't tell me the tender price, but can you give me a ballpark?
I think it's around eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand?
Installed, yeah. That's supplied and installed, okay.
That's good. Any other questions? Counselor Carter?
Just really a comment, you know, I, the roadside cleanup, I thought went really well. I mean, obviously, there's, particularly if we talk about our friends at Bell Canada, they still have the odd tree on their lines, which may cause us some difficulties, but I think the work that you did was terrific. I had the occasion to go down into Coorthill Lakes yesterday and last night, and I see that they are far from cleared in particularly in the, in the northern, the northern sectors. Also wanted to comment on the, the grading alongside the road. I think I already mentioned to you that, you know, where I live on twenty one was an excellent job this year. And just congratulate you for the work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Just before I ask for the, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to echo that going down five oh seven, you know when you leave Halliburton County. Just thought I'd let you know.
Just before I ask for the resolution, Counselor McKechnie had asked me about an issue that he wanted just to bring forward. I am going to allow it, there'll be no discussion on it today. I am going to ask probably for a staff report, maybe to come back in the, in the near future. So I'll just go ahead.
Yeah, we had an unfortunate accident at County Road six and fourteen, Eagle Lake Store there. And I think we were really lucky. Somebody's coming down from the north and moving pretty fast, a car. And a truck went right through, you know, crossed the bridge, was going towards Eagle Lake Store. And for whatever reason, just rolled into the middle and got T-boned really severely. I mean, it was a big accident, like nobody was killed, thank goodness. But we've had a lot of these close calls there. I mean, I'm, that's where I live and I go by there once or twice a day. I've seen a lot of close calls in the last thirty, forty years. And the people in that, in the area are always asking me, you know, is there anything we can do with that corner wall? It is really serious. And I sure as heck don't expect the county to put in lights because it'd be ridiculous and I don't think the traffic count would merit it. But I really do believe, because I do believe in four-way stops. And I think that the one in Men, in Menland Falls, I, I think that's a great example of how four-way stop works. And I know I've already talked to one contractor friend of mine and he said, oh, jeez, what about our logging trucks coming? You know, there's a bit of a grade coming down the hill, but there's a long, pretty long run there before, you know? And I, and I thought to myself, I didn't say what I, what I wanted to say to him. Well, a logging truck, if that was a logging truck yesterday, unfortunately, we would be, you know, there'd be, whoever's in that truck wouldn't be here today. So I would like to propose that we really think hard about putting a four-way stop in there. I don't think it costs a lot of money. And needless to say, if it doesn't work, it's very easy to take it out. But we're, it's so easy to happen, coming down the hill or coming around the corner at Eagle Lake there, that coming from, say, the junction. So I, I really think that it's time that we address it. I believe that we dodged one yesterday.
Thanks, Walt. And like I did say, that I would be maybe asking for a report to come back at a future meeting.
Appreciate it.
Resolution?
I, I just wanted to.
I wasn't going to debate this at all.
No, no debate, but I was going to ask if we're going to have a report come back, that there would be options, if there are other options.
Well, I mean.
Gary? If I can, yes, through the, the deputy word of the point, it would be a full review of the situation in hand as Counselor McKechnie. So get the specifics at section, that intersection as well, that would be part of the report.
Resolution?
That report, P W S eleven twenty five, Public Works Work Plan, June Update Be Received For Information.
Someone move, Counselor Carter, seconded by Counselor Perry. All in favor? It's carried.
Thank you.
I think so. Item K motions, reconsider the passing of motion R one oh two dash twenty five, County Administration Building Renovations. Gary?
So procedurally, a motion to reconsider has to be moved by somebody who was on the prevailing side of the motion, which Counselor McKechnie was not. So I'm wondering if it should be moved by somebody who voted in favor of the motion? And the second thing is that it's my understanding if any action has already been taken on the motion, that we can't reconsider it. I don't care, I'm happy to discuss it, I just want us to do it correctly.
It's, if I might, it's, normally I would agree with you, counselor, on your assessment. Actually, the way, the way our procedure bar is written, it, it provides for as long as the motion to reconsider, it doesn't occur the day of the original motion, then any member of council can bring it forward. And it's silent, and again, normally, a traditionally written bylaw would be in the opposite, would say that somebody from the majority would have to change their opinion or at least bring the motion forward. And to your point, if work had already been created, completed, then it can, our bylaw is silent in that effect, unfortunately. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just again, before I read the motion, if I might, just to refresh from the, my report is in there, is the only matter being up for discussion right now is the motion itself. If the motion is passed, then, then we can proceed into with the permission of the ward, and we can proceed in with the discussion on the potential reconsideration of the original motion.
We have to get it on the floor first.
So it's, I'll read the motion as moved by Counselor McKechnie.
Yep.
Moved by Counselor McKechnie, that Halliburton County Council Pursuit to Section twenty six of the procedural bylaw forty two fifty seven, reconsider the passing of motion R one oh two twenty twenty five, County Administrative Building Renovations eleven, Newcastle Street, Minden.
Ask for a seconder. Counselor Perry.
Can we speak to the motion at all or?
Just, you can't speak, you can only speak to the fact of whether it should be reconsidered or not, you can't speak to the substance of the original motion.
We'll have time.
That's what I want to do. That's what I want to do. Is, is just speak to the motion, whether we should move forward with the motion itself.
That's correct. That's right. Yeah, go ahead.
Excuse me. I just wanted to say that we talked about this a lot. We've been talking about it for years. And, and the motion that we're talking about was passed as, if I'm not mistaken, it was a recorded vote. Seven to one, we agreed that we would move in the direction, and it's not a direction that I cared to move in, but we seven to one agreed that that's the direction that we would take. And I would wonder why we are going to discuss it again. I, I don't believe that we should be. That's just my two cents worth.
Do you want to read the resolution again?
Is there's no other questions?
No other questions?
Okay, Warden Burton has requested a recorded vote. Counselor Carter?
Whether we reconsider or not.
It is the motion, it's the specific motion is, is, is R one oh two twenty twenty-five. And that was the motion that was passed two meetings ago. Yes. Yeah, just a second. Call my report. Yep.
Be very clear.
Yep. Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's included in my report from the previous section. So the motion R one oh two twenty twenty-five was moved by Deputy Warden Danielson, seconded by Counselor Ryle. That report, PWS ten twenty-five Land Registry, Land Registry Office and Administrative Building Renovation Project be, update be received. And that council approved the renovation eleven Newcastle Street is identified in the staff report, PWS ten twenty-five. And the staff be directed to meet with representatives from the township of Minden Hills to enter into discussions for shared use of the Minden Hills Council Chambers. And as, as previously mentioned, it was a recorded vote at the request of Counselor Fury, and it was carried seven to one.
You all right, Buck? Will you read this one again?
Yeah. So moved by Counselor McKechnie, seconded by Counselor Fury, that Halliburton County Council Pursuit to Section twenty-six of procedural bylaw forty-two fifty-seven, reconsider the passing of motion R one oh two twenty twenty-five County Administrative Building Renovations eleven Newcastle Street, Minden.
All in favor?
Well, you, you. Counselor Carter?
Not trying to be obtuse, but I want to make sure that I get my vote right. If I, what is, what is the I and what is the nay?
A vote for means council's willing to consider reconsider the, the earlier decision. A vote against is the original decision would stand.
Aye.
Deputy Warden Danielson. Counselor Shell.
Nay.
Counselor Ryle.
Nay.
Counselor, I should be Warden Burton.
Yay.
Counselor McKechnie. Counselor Fury. Motion passes four to three.
Open, all right. Open for discussion. Mary?
I just wanted to say that if, if everybody can remember the last meeting, the staff went out and brought back a resolution and we didn't hardly discuss it. We voted on it. And I have always some concerns about spending a million and a half dollars over there. And then being told, and I'd like to clarify this, that the, the land behind won't support a a, a, a structure?
No, it's not that it won't support a structure. The commentary is because it's, it's a filled site. The, the structure, the requirements to build on it from a cost perspective would be far outstrip the cost of renovating the buildings.
Well, I've been in the building business for thirty years and I certainly deny that because it's only a slab that needs to go on it.
With, just to, just to clarify my answer, my response, based on our understanding, it's not a slab construction, it's a filled site. So it's not, you're not on native grounds, filled site. So you would be looking at structural, construct, structural.
If you look all the way along here, it's all part of this hill. It's all solid ground. I was here when they did this building next door. They didn't do anything to, to justify the footings. So I, I, I think it can be done and I think it's reasonable. I'd like to see us get an appraisal on that building. It's now clean, right? It's ready, the asbestos is out and.
That's correct.
And the mold, see what that value is. And, and look at the alternatives. We, we didn't have a very thorough, Liz is right. It did, it's been coming up since, for four years here. And there was never any discussion, oh, well, we'll move over there. Well, I don't think we realized what was happening over there until Gary brought us a plan forward.
I'd have to disagree with that.
Well, that's fine.
But there's been a lot of discussion about this, you know, during the last term of council. You know, and, and maybe even before that, that there's been discussion about that building across the road and what we could or could not do with it. You know, if, if, if I, if we were going to have a full discussion about this, I mean, I, I know that there's, you know, based on the resolution that we passed the last time, that we, that we would look at doing this building and we would talk to Minden Hills about using the council chambers, that was it. If we want to discuss this, I want to discuss every option that we've got. I mean, I know that you want to talk about in addition. I want to go back to talking about, we need to go across the road.
Well.
And, and I don't believe, I'm not finished. I do not believe that what you're proposing can be done for less than what we're looking at for both buildings.
Well, I guess we wouldn't know that until we found that out. So we need to discuss all the options. I like what you said. Because we haven't.
I think my head will explode here, surely.
All of us at the same time.
I, look, I, I, I voted aye on this just because I think we needed to have the full discussion. Not, I, I actually supported the motion last time. And, you know, I continue to support it, but I thought we needed to have this discussion. Look, there, there are there are a lot of moving pieces here. I mean, there's the building across the road and we, we, we left that out of our motion last time. Okay, it was just left to be there, to be discussed at some point in the future. I'm okay with that. You know, whether or not it could be sold or it could be whatever. Fine, you know, that was, the, the real issue was on, you know, on this building and the potential of whether or not we would have to move the, the chambers and is there something that we could do with Minden Hills or whatever? I, I think if we're going to have this discussion, whether it be everything or, or nothing, we need to have a framework about what the hell we're discussing. We can't have four moving parts and some people think we're talking about three of them and other people thinking we're talking about four of them. So if we're going to have this discussion, I think we have to lay out exactly what it is that we're going to be discussing so that we can come to these decisions clear. And, and finally.
I, I, I don't disagree with, with what Counselor Carter has said, is just staff was responding to the direction provided by council.
And, and they have.
And so, and that's from, and with respect to earlier comment from Counselor Fury, is this matter came to council on three separate occasions, came through at budget, came through at pre-design, came through at post-design, and then finally came at our, at our last council meeting. So there was, there was a lot of, however, to, with respect to your response, we were moving forward with as directed with, by council was the renovation of that building in this building. If the direction to go forward is you want to look at other options, well, then we can do that as well. But that, that wasn't the direction of council last time.
Well, first of all, I didn't even know we had, had an engineer hired or a consultant. I, I don't know where I missed, was I sleeping? Did that come to this table?
I think it was before you came back to my council that we agreed to hire.
Okay, so here we are, we've got new people here and I guess we don't have very many new ones. But we, we didn't even know what was going on. Like I didn't realize till I heard they were carrying carpet samples in there. So it's gone pretty far. And I don't think there's been enough dialogue. I'm with you, Liz. I'd like to discuss all the options. And if that's the best option, I'll be voting in favor of it. But I'm telling you from what I'm hearing on the street, to spend that kind of money over there. And, and what, in these times, when there's maybe an alternative, maybe not. It's not very smart.
So I guess what I'm hearing, Gary, and Lisa, go ahead.
Okay, I, I, again, I feel like my head's going to explode because I thought what we voted on was we weren't doing anything over there. There was not going to be any more money spent over there and we were only going to spend the money on renovating here to make more offices. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
I totally agree with Counselor Shell. I mean, the, the debate of what we do across there, whether we build over here, extend it all the way across the other side of the bloody river, is irrelevant. The relevancy is how much room do we need here for staff to do their job effectively? And we're being told categorically that they need more room to do that. Now, those of us who, who choose to agree or disagree, it's really not important. It's the point we're getting that, this is where it gets back to that argument of, don't, don't, I made up my mind, don't confuse me with facts. We need the room in here for staff. Case closed. Okay, we're looking more than a buck and a half to expand the building and another buck and a half to, to the other one. The solution that came up the last time may or may not be permanent. But it is a whole lot cheaper than spending that kind of money and we might be able to use that over there. If it, if it's only good for a year or two, then that's fine. That may end up becoming a better deal anyway, because now we're not going to put all the money for this in one, in one year for the taxpayers to deal with. It could end up becoming this piece being renovated, making our, our, our staff more effective. That would be a return on investment that cannot be denied. And then we can look at whether we're going to do over there. If, if, if incompatibility becomes a problem, that is, the province, Minden Hills and, and us cannot get together over there, then that requires either the expansion or the, the one over there. Now, if we're saying that we can't make renovations to this building, because if we build on the back, it's going to change things. Well, then I, I, I don't know if I'm going to live long enough to see it all happen.
We do bring it back to a future meeting for discussion and some of the options laid out. No options.
No, 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 it's, it's, we're at the direction of council. I say that our work, I just think it's important to say this, the work we've completed to date was in reference to direction from council. It, the, the project itself, I came here in November of, 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 of twenty twenty-four and the it was, it was, it was on the table then and it was brought to council three separate times after that. So from, from that standpoint, there was a lot of information shared with council going forward. Now, having said that, if we, and we responded to the direction of council where we're at today, we will continue to respond to the direction of council going forward. Specifically with respect to, is there is no motion on the floor right now other than the, the discussion to reconsider? So we would need a motion to do something different.
Well, I, I haven't had a chance to speak yet.
I realize that, I've been trying to get to it.
Yeah, so, and, and I'm going to, of course, maybe cause this, but that's the way it is. And my opinion is that I, this is twenty twenty-five. They can, construction can be, a lot of things can be done today that, that weren't done yesterday. And if we needed to expand out the back of the building, I mean, I don't know enough about soil samples and whatever, but there's enough room there. So I'm sure it could be done. So that's one thing. In, in, in regard to the building across the street, if, if I had my vote and my say on it, we'd be selling it. And, and I think that'd be a positive for maybe for developer to, to create into some affordable housing in there, if, if it could be possible. In regard to this building, and I'm very passionate about history and tradition. This, this room especially, it's in, in this building's been around a long, long time. And I think, does it need a little, some, some loving, tender love and care? Yeah, it definitely does. But I, I think that I'm not going to get into numbers because I don't know the exact numbers on top of my head, but we're talking about spending a lot of money here. And I, I firmly believe that if we renovated to create a little bit more office space, like you're saying that you might need, Gary. That's great. And I'd love to see us fix this room up. I had a ride on the elevator today, first time I've ever had. There was three of us on the elevator. It, it surely wasn't that bad of an experience. And I, I firmly believe that if we, we're, we're going to do all these things to this building, if we needed to move down the street to the, to Minden, I think it'd be very great and, and I thank Minden's council and Mayor Carter and Deputy Mayor Shell for open their hearts up, for letting us come down there and run county for whether it takes one month or three months or whatever. But I, I, I just think that just destroying everything that's gone on in this room for so long and, and, and moving it to another site is, is not right. We're going to do all the accessible renovations anyways in this building. It doesn't matter what, whether that costs them one million or two million dollars by twenty, is it twenty thirty we have to have that all done by?
Has to be done now.
Now, okay, but it has to be done now. So, so that money's a given. I mean, that's happening in this building no matter what. Not, not on top of what we're talking about in expansion or whatever else. So everybody wants to discuss more, but, but that's where, that's how I feel. I could go on more and more, but I'm going to shut up. I do believe that, that, that's how I feel today and that's how I'm going to feel tomorrow. So, thank you.
Just, just for clarification, word into, to Counselor McKechnie's comment. The six hundred thousand dollars cost to do the AODA compliance in this building is included in the total project cost. It's not in addition to, it's part of. So is it doing nothing other than AODA compliance is six hundred thousand dollars for this building?
You know, I, I just wanted to clarify about that.
Counselor Carter?
So in, in terms, again, I would like us to make this decision and make a final decision on this. So I, I think as Warden Burton has stated, you know, we need to come back to council and I know you, as a staff, you need a resolution. What I would like to see is something that's clear in terms of, these are the needs. You know, we need, you know, the, to bring building into compliance. We need to have this much more office space if, you know, and that's from your opinion or from what you, you have determined, we need to have, you know, a council chambers, et cetera. You know, so let's be clear on our needs and then look at the options to fulfill, to fulfill that. I, I'm not sure if the building across the way is, is valuable in terms of, you know, us, us trying to sell it. But if we had it appraised, maybe it comes in to be worth, and I'm just picking numbers midair, maybe it's two hundred thousand, maybe it's a million, whatever it might be. You know, I think that that becomes part of a consideration of, of, you know, how we move forward. But if we were just the, even say, okay, we're just going to leave that for now and let's concentrate on the things that we need to concentrate on. Then, and then look at what the options are. I don't. You know, we, we, we have, we have some things that are given. We have this, this old building that needs to be updated. We need office space. We have a, a, a council chamber that we use a couple of times a month and the courts use once a month. So there's a building there that, you know, that, you know, potentially could be used, whether it's for three months or two years or five years or whatever. So I, I, I know it still becomes pretty loose in terms of giving you, you know, specific instructions, but I, I, I think we need to get it all on the table so everybody can understand what's going on.
Gary?
Thank you, Warden. And in response to Counselor Carter, again, at the risk of repeating myself, the information with respect to the needs of this building was clearly articulated to council on multiple occasions. We will, we will re, re-bring that information back with respect to, in another report to council stating what was said in the previous reports. Where I am unclear now is what else I'm doing. Right? And, and it's just for the purposes of moving forward. So I need, I will need at least two different motions if that, if that, if, if it's, if it's not going to be status quo. So the first one was being to understand is the first thing I have to do is I have to cancel the procurement document that's currently out. Right? Then I need, am I getting, if I understand correctly, am I getting appraisal on the building across the street? And secondly, am I getting a construction estimate on to put an addition on, on the back of this building to compensate for the, the last, the, the loss of this square footage for growth?
Good. Now, I got Mary first. Good. Now, I got Mary first, Liz and Lucy.
Well, I I think Gary, you you summed it very well. I just don't believe we we just spent twenty minutes talking about a service we deliver you. We don't even know where we are with people coming in here. And we're already saying that we're 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 out of space. I I think we look need to look at the options. I I know it's it's not the best layout probably for for a county building, but it is it's not maybe totally functional, but it it does work. And so I I think if you get the appraisal and you look at what you need at the back here and see if it can be done, then we got to clear, we got to clear. I'm I have no problem going to Minden, that's not a big deal. But I do have a problem when that's particularly left out, because after all, that will be the push to to go ahead with that. I I I wasn't born yesterday.
Again, I don't, with respect, Counselor, I didn't understand your last comment. Both across the road, because that was part of the original submission was across the road.
I'm sorry, but we weren't three times showing a plan by an architect and saying this is going to be a public room, this is going to be a council chamber. I I only saw that at the one meeting.
I feel a bit like we're a bunch of dinosaurs. I. I like I I I really see that it would be problematic. First of all, I think we meet a lot more in this building than anybody realizes. This is not a two meetings a month building or room. This is used far more than that for for by other groups, by other organizations, by county staff, by committees. There's a lot more use in that and I'm not sure, you know, whether Minden's building can accommodate that. I think that the idea of using the Minden chambers is short sighted. I mean, in in an interim basis, it's it it can it can work. But I don't think we've even investigated the full cost of doing that. It was a question that I raised at the last meeting. How much is that going to cost us? You know, on not just to move in, but on an ongoing basis. I'd hate to see us cancel the RFP for the work that's being done, because I mean, that's a key piece of information that let us know exactly what it's going to cost to do the work. If we're going to look at every option that we've got, I want to be able to see what it's what it would cost to do and if it's even possible to do an addition. I mean, you know, I I think it's we got people working in the basement and we really and truly do need to make sure that everybody's got a safe and reasonable working space. I I like I I feel like. Councilor Shell said, just like you feel like the top of my head is blowing off, we've just gone around and around and around in circles. We've given clear direction to staff and and now we're back to the beginning, square one.
Just from a process clarification standpoint, so it's required that we cancel the RFP, because if we don't, under the turnout was put together, if it comes in within budget, we have to award it. Right? So and and so we're not in that space yet, we haven't hit that deadline yet. So we would, if the direction of council is to do this extra work that would take us beyond that deadline, because we have construction, we have some construction costs up basically a little better than class D costs on the construction of this building. So I'm not really concerned about the value of the construction we're talking about here, except you're not getting the the tender price, right? So I'm not concerned with that. But from a process standpoint, is that if the direction is going is going to be that we're delaying the project to get an appraisal done across the street, to get a re-engineer drawing back, you know, basically looking at geotech thing on the back, you're getting basically an architect to give you a a design cost for whatever the square footage would be required at the back, that'll take time. And we probably wouldn't be coming back to council till the middle of fall at at the earliest on that. So from a directional standpoint, that's the procedures that that I'm required to follow going forward. But I just and 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 please take this comment with the respect I mean it in. I just want to be clear going forward that in a month, I'm not having to come back and change again.
Yep. Counselor.
It's a fair desire.
I feel like this is deja vu all over again. And and the reason for that is because in Highland Seas, we've been doing our new building for what fifteen years now? Twelve.
Probably.
And and and, you know, I I'm getting older. I I want to live long enough to walk into whatever the hell we're going to do. So so whatever it takes to get a decision, and I don't like putting the decision off until fall. But we need to have, where are we going before the end of the budgets are set? That has to happen. And if we can break ground in twenty twenty six, whether it's late in the season or not, that's fine. So I'm to the point now where I'm more interested in getting a result than debating anymore. So if we want to get an appraisal on it, let's get one. We want to get an appraiser on on what we're going to do, let's get it. Let's get what it takes to make the decision right.
Right. Bob?
Well, the one thing is is that, you know, as you get older, you can be fully reassured this will be an accessible building. So so you'll be able to come in. And look, I'm I'm sorry for staff and for what they have to go through, but this is a this is a big and expensive decision that's going to, you know, take us forward for a couple of decades. So, you know, again, let's let's all get on the same page and do it right.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the the conversation. Gary, I guess you got some procedural stuff. All right. Sure, that's a ten minute break. Ten ten minute break. Travis? Order, uh, we do have a resolution.
Um, I think I was able to capture the bulk of our conversation. If I'm missing anything, please let me know. Um, that staff be directed to cancel RFP CTY dash PW dash 2025 dash two A, which was the, the, the work for this building. Um, and that staff be directed to A, obtain an appraisal for 12 Newcastle Street. And B, obtain a cost estimate for the construction in addition to 11 Newcastle Street, including the completion of a geotechnical study.
Could I have someone move? Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Ferry. All in favor? Pose. It's carried. Uh, uh, business arising from previous meeting, um, 2024 Halbert Highlands OPP detachment board.
Sorry, my mistake. I made a clerical error. Um, I, I, with council's permission, I have to add a piece to this is that the piece I forgot to add will be that, um, resolution R102 2025, uh, be rescinded. And then this one will kick in. I forgot that part.
Counselor Dannison, we've discussed this round and round and I.
I know, I, I just want to know how we're going to have, if, if we have to um, withdraw the RFP, how do we ensure that we've got all the information? Like if we're going to talk about this again, and we want to look at every aspect of this. How do we know that we've got all the information without that, that?
Gary explained that earlier.
Yeah, a, as I, as I said previously, just for everybody's, uh, clarity is, I, I'm relatively confident with the level of costing detail we received from the, our consultant with respect to the renovation of this building and that which gave us our estimate. Look, it's better than a class D estimate, but it is a detailed estimate that that will give us a good foundation piece that we, it will be an apples to apples comparison when the new dot, when the new, um, information comes forward. The only difference being, um, and, but I think we can extrapolate some of the information we have from the previous one would be like the finishing cost of the addition that would we're looking at in this building.
Okay. My, my apologies have been.
Sure.
I was wondering, timing wise, are we going to be able to, in your opinion, uh, Mr. Dyke, to have this available for a decision prior to the 2026 motion?
Yes, my, that's my, the only thing I, I would say the, what I think would be the longer piece is, is securing the appraisal, uh, for 12 Newcastle Street. Um, but the rest of it, I, I think we can come forward with that prior to getting the appraisal. If that's, if council's comfortable with that, if it comes to that, is that the construction piece, I, I, I'm fairly confident we can have that back to council in relatively short order.
Ms. Tevin.
Good afternoon, Warden Burton and members of council. Before you is a written report that both summarizes the police detachment board chair's verbal report from June 11th and includes the 2024 Halbert Highlands Detachment Board Annual Report Document from Staff Sergeant Deb McClure, the new detachment commander of the Halbert Highlands Detachment. The detachment commander was not able to attend today due to another commitment, but she does plan to introduce herself to county council at an upcoming meeting of council and can speak to this report at that time. So this, uh, report has been filed for your consideration and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, resolution?
Uh, the staff report, PDB, uh, zero one, 2025, uh, 2024 Halbert Highlands OPP detachment board and report be received and filed.
Someone move, uh, Counselor Dannison, second by Counselor McKechnie. All in favor? It's carried. Thanks, Sue. Correspondents?
Um, that the correspondence for press release from the Halbert Highlands Health Services be received.
If someone move, Counselor Carter, second by Counselor Shell. All in favor? It's carried. Confirmation by law?
Uh, that bylaw 4309 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the June 25th, 2025 meeting in Halbert County Council be considered to be read a first, second, and third time.
If someone move, Counselor Dannison, second by Counselor Carter. All in favor? It's carried. Adjournment.
That the June 25th, 2025 meeting at Halbert County Council be adjourned at 3:12.
Move by McKechnie, second by Ryle. All in favor? Scary. Thank you. Thank you, counsel.